...back in session, we're now on Bill 54. Senator Blasch, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to move Bill 54 to refer back to the committee for more work. I understand that despite the support of this body with respect to adopting some of the recommendations of the Mayor's Council, this bill lacks a budget breakdown and by referring it back to the committee will give us time to incorporate that and perhaps consider this bill at, you know, at a later time, sooner. So I'd like to refer this back to the committee.
On that motion, is there any objection? Without objection, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll take a one-minute recess real quick.
...to be the committee on tourism, maritime, military, and veterans' affairs, foreign affairs, for purposes of discussion.
On that motion, without objection, so ordered. Speaker, I think so.
Mr. Speaker, the situation that we have right now in the port is that we... there's a shortage in terms of manpower, especially with the move that's going on with the military and also a lot of the speculation that's going on. The hiring of cashew is actually just a management tool that existed since the port was established way back when, even when Senator Frank Ishizaki was a young boy. The port has only two peak days weekly. Currently, the permanent workforce services, one vessel, the cashier call for two to three vessel operation. Cashew and on-call employees with no sick leave and benefit. But if there's no discussion, Mr. Speaker, I move that we go down to third reading.
On the motion, is there any objection going down to third reading? Okay, the motion carries. We're on Bill 57. Senator Blasch, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to move Bill 57 to a third reading.
On that motion? Without objection? You want to discuss it?
If permitted to, sir. Bill 57, Mr. Speaker, basically provides, and this was introduced, I introduced this along with, to my colleagues, what this provides is after a discussion that we've had with the Guam Memorial Hospital with concerns that they have, one is in the area of sole source procurement, in that by statute, they have been required to have their chairman of their board countersign the sole source procurement. This is a process, a procedure, that only the chairman of this board in the government is supposed to do. And what this basically does is that in this area, so that it can help to expedite the needed, the procurement of those needed supplies that have already been approved by the board to move on, that this procurement does not require the need for the chairman of the board to countersign this. Secondly, what this bill provides is it broadens the scope of the requirements for those individuals who want to apply or for the chief financial officer position of the Guam Memorial Hospital.
Very well, any further discussion? There being none on the motion to place in third, is there any objection? Without objection, so ordered. We'll take a brief recess. Bill 57, 97, excuse me, on file until the authorizes.
Speaker, I'd like to move to pass Bill number 97.
Until the authorize. Until the authorizes.
Until the author arrives?
Okay, on that motion, without objection? So ordered. We are now in Bill number 62.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move, this is a substitute bill, I think. Hold on one second. As amended, yeah. I'd like to move to accept Bill number 62 as amended by the committee.
On that motion, without objection, so ordered.
Again, I'd like to also move to place Bill 62 as amended in the third reading, and I'd like to also defer to the author. Well, I'd like to make a, okay.
All right, all I want to know is, you want the author to speak first?
Yes, allow the author to speak first.
Okay, so on the motion, Senator Pangolino, you recognize?
Sidojima, Mr. Speaker, and thank you very much to the good chairman of the committee for giving me this opportunity to speak first on the bill. The bill, Mr. Speaker, is pretty simple, and if there's two things that are almost universal, I think in agreement by our community, is one that we needed to raise the driver's license fee from five bucks to 10. That was almost universal, I don't think anybody objected to that. And that we need to take a look at the QC program. And so this bill, Bill 62, would take a look at the QC program. It's a bill that would place a moratorium on the issuance of new qualifying certificate programs, and not only on the issuance of new ones, but extensions and modifications of existing ones. And then it goes further to establish a working group that would take a look and review the qualifying certificate program. As you know, Mr. Speaker, the qualifying certificate program has been used by our government to entice investors to come to Guam by granting certain tax abatements and rebates in order for them to take the risk of almost being first movers in industries and the businesses on Guam. When the risk is highest is when you don't have a developed infrastructure. And the qualifying certificate program is supposed to mitigate some of the risk of making that investment in Guam when the infrastructure's not there yet or they have to build it themselves. That is really what happened with the tourism industry. We didn't have an industry to support tourism. We didn't have the airline flights coming in here. We didn't have a beautiful airport. We didn't have sewer and water on our beaches to service the hotels that come into Guam. So in order to entice these people to come in and place investments in Guam, in the tourism industry, for example, without the existing economic infrastructure to support that growth, we offered rebates and abatements and taxes so that when they make the investment, they can recoup their investments faster, or else use the abatements and rebates to reinvest into their infrastructure to help build the industry. And the most notable industry, of course, that have been benefited from this is the tourism industry. And since 1962 or '63, I believe, when the security blanket was lifted from Guam and we began pushing to get tourists in here, and the development of hotels and so forth, we've seen the investments come to Guam. The problem we saw is that even upon the maturation of the industry, we continued to grant the investments or extension of the existing investments in terms of the abatements and rebatements, even though it was now the government that was making the investments into the infrastructure. No more was it requirement that the developer makes the investments in the infrastructure. Now it was the government. Now we are spending 12, 15 million dollars a year in advertising in Japan and our other foreign markets to bring the visitors here. It's no longer just dependent upon the one or two hotels that took the risk of coming to Guam to advertise. Now the government's sinking its money. Now the government is the one that's putting in the $100 million to rebuild Tumon Bay and put the water and the power, put power underground to make sure that we have the infrastructure to support the industry. So right now, the risk is not as great as it was in the past, yet we continue to see the proliferation of granting of new QC's and the extension of existing ones, even those that have been paid for many times over from the tax abatements and rebates. And it is this wild runaway granting of these certificates that I think needs to be curtailed to place a hold on while we reexamine and reevaluate the economic benefits of granting these investments. Now, over the years, we've expanded economic investment rebate and abatement programs, the qualifying certificate programs, to other industries. We advance them into telecommunications industries, healthcare, and other attendant services that support the tourism industry. And all of that still needs to stop, but one of the other industries that we've made an investment in is the captive insurance industry. And during the public hearing, we heard of three or four, five captives that are seriously looking at Guam. Now, the difference in the captive is that the captive wants to bring a book of business to Guam that would go elsewhere, that doesn't take any of the infrastructure requirements. It's almost an infrastructure from a physical standpoint, neutral with regards to the need to support it. But we do need to support it with professional services and so forth, and just to have these individuals come here and park their money, basically, on Guam without using our roads, without using our sewer and so forth, park the money in the bank and using the financial infrastructure. And so that industry, I think, still needs to be helped along and so forth. So we've actually carved out that as not applying the moratorium on that, or those that would bring business here on coverage that does not currently exist on Guam. So we're not giving anything away. And for example, one of the industries, one of the coverages that's being contemplated is for malpractice insurance. So we didn't want to put in this timeframe of the freeze on this moratorium to cover that industry there, because it's nothing that takes it, it's something that doesn't exist on Guam now. It's not like we were going to extend the coverage for something that exists on Guam and lose revenues from it. It's revenues we just don't have at all. And if they bring it here, they bring additional requirements for professional services that could help that. So it does make that one distinction, Mr. Speaker. So the bill would then set up the working group to analyze the qualifying certificate program, the economic benefits of it, make recommendations to the Guam legislature for enhancements, changes, amendments to the current qualifying certificate program, on how they, how this group would best think we can restructure the qualifying certificate program to provide for greater benefits for our people, and the same time takes into account the tax abatement and tax rebate period. And then we would, of course, get a report from this working group, which should include recommendations and draft-filled bill form for consideration by the legislature to amend or repeal the existing statute covering the qualifying certificate program. Now, there would be seven members on this working group, and they will include the administrator of Getca, the legislature, or his speaker of the legislature, or his designee, the administrator of the Economic Development Authority, Revenue and Tax, Department of Administration, the Attorney General, and then, of course, representatives from the private sector and the small business development sector. And the period shall be for no more than, I think, I'm sorry, Mrs. Speaker, 250 days. So within 250 days, the, there's a freeze on it, the working group gets together, makes them recommendations. If the legislature doesn't act within that 250 days, then the exemptions are lifted. And again, the assumption, or the presumption there, is that whatever recommendations were made have been reviewed by the legislature, and they've either acted upon them or decided that we want to continue the qualifying certificate program in its current structure without enacting some of the recommendations that will be forthcoming. So it's not forever. I think it's a good way of approaching the need to reexamine and reevaluate and retool the qualifying certificate program, and I ask my colleagues for their indulgence and their support on this measure. Thank you, Sidojima, Mr. Speaker.
On the motion? Senator Guthrie, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and colleagues. I rise in support of this bill, and I'm very honored that my colleague Senator Pangolino invited me to join him in co-sponsoring this bill. There's been a lot of expressions of concern regarding the current qualifying certificate program administered through Getca. And there really has not been a careful evaluation of the program in terms of its value to the people of Guam as a whole for many, many, many years. And I think one of the important aspects of this bill is that it would put together a team of professional folks in our government and from outside our government to objectively sit down and look at the program and how it can be improved upon, enhanced, perhaps changed, to meet the needs of today, and the needs that require us to respond to the dynamic expectations that people have about Guam's growth in the next decade or so. Personally, I think that we owe it to the people of Guam to assess almost everything we're doing in this government, and this is another step forward in that direction. As you know, Mr. Speaker, our co-Vice Speaker here has already assembled the SES group to begin looking at the economics of how we do our budgeting. We have the Special Accounting Group that's already begun meeting. That's an excellent sign of recognition that we need to look at what we're doing in this government with reference to finances. We still have one more thing that we must do according to law, and that's to get our tax commission assembled. They're supposed to submit a report, by the way, Mr. Speaker, I think September the 6th, by law, you know, the last budget law requires them to prepare a report. They don't have much time to do it, but that's still one more thing that needs to be assembled as required by law, to look at the way our taxes are designed and to make recommendations on changes in our tax structure, our local tax structure, and even some of the other issues that have confronted this legislature over the last many months. But I'm very pleased with Senator Pangolino's vision on this particular bill, and I'm very honored to join him in supporting it, and I encourage all of my colleagues, wherever you may be, to please support this bill. Thank you.
On the motion? Without objection, the motion carries. Can I have a motion to pass on file Bill number 59 until the author arrives, which supposedly is any minute?
Okay, Mr. Speaker? I'd like to move to pass on file Bill number 59, 59 EC, until the author arrives.
Which brings us to, oh, on the motion, is there any objection? Without objection, so ordered. Which brings us to Bill number 61. Senator Ishizaki, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to move that we place Bill number 61 into the third reading file.
Would you like to discuss the motion?
Yes, on behalf of the sponsor, I'll be glad to discuss the motion. This bill is really an adjustment, an amendment to existing laws on public disclosure for officials who are either elected, appointed, or serve in other capacities as chief executive officers. It's a public integrity, public disclosure law that's going to require everybody to disclose all felony convictions within or without our territory of the United States. And just to disclose any convictions in any court, and to specify in detail the address of the court of data conviction, specific infraction committed, and it does impact on elected officials, officials appointed by the governor, chief executive officers, candidates who declare offices who run for office. And with minor concern on my part, possibly, I may pitch in a slight amendment. It is a good bill. I propose we accept it. I do have a, and I wish the author was here, because on page, I'd like to propose an amendment for, and there are no page numbers, on section 3, section 13103. Since there's no page number, please take your time to find it. In line 20, it discusses a written report itemizing any and all felony convictions, whether public or under seal, that have been dismissed upon successful appeal vacated by a court or cleared by a grant of executive pardon. And I'd like to propose an amendment to delete vacated by a court or cleared by a grant of executive pardon, because by those actions, I believe you're eliminating those convictions. So that's an amendment request that I'd like to make. Any, so I'd like to move for that amendment?
I think you should write that amendment.
Okay, let me write that amendment.
Okay, we'll take a one-minute recess. I have a Frank Ishizaki amendment here. Senator Ishizaki?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That's an amendment to section 13103, line 1819, and it's really to delete the bulk of those two lines, so that we protect people that have cases that are under seal, people whose convictions have been pardoned, and for which cases have been vacated.
Does anybody want to talk about it, or? Senator Ishizaki, do you want to speak on your motion?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, you know, I'm, you know, when cases are under seal, the court, the judge in that particular trial has reason to seal a document, whether it's an indictment or a conviction, and that's a sanctity of the court. And to violate that, anyone who counters that would be in contempt of court and may actually hinder an ongoing prosecution or ongoing investigation. And is that what we want to do? I don't believe so. Should we also tag somebody who's been pardoned? Should we tag somebody whose case has been vacated? I believe that when a case is vacated, it's equal to a dismissal. The basic tenet of the Constitution of the United States says that one should be assumed to be innocent until proven guilty. And when your case is vacated, you have not been proven guilty. And so these are provisions in current law which we must honor. The rest of this bill looks fine to me, so I hope people will accept that amendment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I think if we speak on one plane, I don't think you're going to get any argument with regards to this matter, and that's when you speak on the legal plane with regards to public officials and those that want to present themselves as public officials by declaring candidacy to run for public office. But there's another component of qualification for public office, and that is this component called moral turpitude or moral suitability. And it's not up to us to be the judge of, the moral judge of character for ourselves, it is for the public to judge us. And I think the bill in drafting, the way it's been drafted and placing those provisions in there, it speaks to the moral suitability, not for ourselves, but for the public to judge us. And in order for the public to make that judgment, then they have to have all the information available. And if you get pardoned, if you commit a crime and you're pardoned, then maybe the public will be as forgiving as the executive official that pardoned you. But that's for them to judge, that's for them to know, and that's for them to ultimately cast their ballot as to your suitability to represent them. So while on a legal perspective, we may all be doing things right here, but when we're presenting ourselves to be public representatives, and there's a component of being judged as whether or not we are suitable for that, this matter called your moral character, the, that's when I think the disclosure comes in. And for removal from office, for recall, it doesn't take a violation of law, it takes a violation of moral turpitude in order to be eligible to be recalled. So if we look at it from that perspective, that if you can be recalled for moral turpitude, then you can be judged whether or not you're suitable to be placed in that office based upon your moral character. And the information that's being sought to be revealed in this may all be legal, but it doesn't allow the public to judge you on the other component. And that's why I think that the bill is being introduced. Thank you.
Let's just vote on this, it's pretty obvious what the mood of the body is. All those in favor of the amendment signify by raising a hand. The amendment by Senator Ishizaki, okay, one, two, three, four, five, six. The motion does not carry. On the main motion to send the bill down to third reading, is there any objection? Without objection, so ordered. Earlier, we had two bills. I'd like to go back to them. The first one, I believe, is Bill 97. Senator Spalding?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, this is a very simple amendment to section 40105B of Title VII, and it's relative to providing flexibility to the courts in the issuance of protective orders. In essence, Mr. Speaker...
Is there a motion?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, excuse me for, I, Mr. Speaker, I moved to place this bill, Bill number 97, into the third reading file, and I would like to speak on the motion.
Okay, Senator Spalding, you recognize on the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, this is a very simple bill, but it has far-reaching effects. And in essence, this is an amendment to Title VII, section 40105B and 10101 of chapter 40. And in essence, at the very essence of this bill, basically, this seeks to give the court, the judges in the superior court level, the discretion as to how long they may grant, they may deem appropriate, for protective orders. Right now, under the law, protective orders may be granted by the judge, but it's not to exceed one year, especially in this situation we're talking about in terms of family violence. And what this bill seeks to do is to give the judge and the court the discretion to be able to go more than one year if he deems it's necessary. And again, I believe that is exactly where the responsibility lies, is with the judge, who is on top of the case, who has gone through public, excuse, not public hearings, has gone through court hearings, who has gone through, who has talked to the parties in the case, who has been able to understand the issues in each individual case, and for him to determine whether a protective order is necessary, especially as it goes past one year. So this is basically the essence of this, and this is basically to afford protection to victims of family crime, so that, because we're finding that a lot of times, one year is not, the one-year maximum in terms of protective order, is not, is not an appropriate time for the healing and for, to take place. So with that, I ask that this body support this amendment to Title VII. Thank you.
On the motion?
No objection.
Okay, without objection, the motion carries. Senator, Senator Spalding, on Bill 59.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I moved to place Bill 59 on the third reading file, and I'd like to speak on it, please.
Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, this is an actuary zone, a certain piece of property up in the Dedito area, and...
And in essence, what happened here is that one of our local businessmen purchased, excuse me, let me start from the top, is a certain lot in the municipality of Dedito belonged to the estate of a local family and was deeded back to the family by the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission pursuant to Public Law 22145, et cetera, as it describes in the bill, which requires that excess federal properties turned over to the government of Guam be transferred to the estates of the original landowners. Now, one of our citizens on this island has since then purchased that property or the rights to the real estate from the original landowners and would like to use it in anticipation of the military buildup. Now, this piece of property is about one or two lots away from the intersection of Marine Drive and NCS. The problem is that without an existing zone designation, the Territorial Land Use Commission is unable to act on this matter. The authority to establish a comprehensive zoning plan for ancestral land commission properties released by the commission to original landowners lies exclusively with the provisional commission for the zoning of ancestral lands. However, this commission has not yet been impaneled since the enactment of Public Law 28133, and it leaves the landowner in this case with no recourse other than to request to establish an appropriate zone for this particular piece of property in Dedito. And with that, they've come to the legislature, and I have come, and I have introduced it to this bill, to rezone this particular lot to an M1 zoning. And with that, I'm asking, and bottom line is, with the anticipated military buildup, we should afford our local people and our local businessmen the opportunity to develop their properties, to take advantage of the pending opportunities that come with this military buildup. And so therefore, I am asking this legislature to support this bill to rezone this particular property, which is one or two lots in from Marine Drive going down NCS Road to an M1 zone. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I don't necessarily rise in opposition to the bill, just to provide some considerations, I think, which may not have been thoroughly vetted out during the process. The intention of the rezoning is to duplicate an existing facility that the gentleman who owns the property has, that is now situated on Marine Drive, to allow him to move his operations from its present location to this new location. And there is the question of who has jurisdiction over rezoning unzoned property or zoning unzoned property. And there is argument, I guess, in terms of the Territorial Land Use, or the Territorial Land Use Commission, or the Guam Land Use Commission, that absent any legislative authority, they can only rezone property. They can't grant initial zoning to unzoned property. My understanding, though, at the, one of the hearings that I attended was that there is a fast-track mechanism or a mechanism, I think it was during the budget hearings, where I asked the executive director of the Ancestral Lands Commission, is there a way to rezone unzoned property under the Ancestral Lands Commission and what happens to these properties that they hand back? And actually, the Ancestral Lands Commission executive director said they have authority and were granted authority, and I'm not privy to when that happened, but he was fairly certain that they have authority to grant or begin the process of granting zoning for these properties that are being released back to the original landowners. So I asked him even a further question. If an original landowner who was granted the property sold the property, and now the property is in the second party's hand, that is not an original landowner, can he still come back and avail himself of that rezoning process or zoning process that exists at the Ancestral Lands Commission? And the response was yes. So we're coming here because the argument is that Guam Land Use Commission doesn't have authority, but my understanding is that the legislature set up authority to do so. Now, I'm not saying that that's where they should go; I'm just saying that that's where they should go. But this is also an avenue that is available to them. And my one concern was, and I asked this of the gentleman who owns the property, is that what is your current zoning designation for the property in which you have your current operation? And his reply was, it's a commercial property, C-zone. And I said, is there anything at all that you cannot do, that you're doing now in your present location, if you moved up there and the property was Zone C? And he goes, no, basically not. We will be able to do everything we want that we're currently doing in this new property if it was Zone C. And the reason I ask that question is because we're moving a little bit further north, and as we move further north, of course, we come closer and closer to the Northern Aquifer. And there is this prohibition, I guess, in terms of activities over the Northern Aquifer. And I'm not sure exactly where we're at on the edge of this property, whether or not the property really is on top of the Northern Aquifer, but I don't know. I think we're pretty close to it. But if he can do everything he can at C to upzone to M1, which grants greater leniency in terms of industrial use, may not be the most prudent thing we can do. If we want to help the gentleman, I don't think we're restricting him from doing anything else if we just zone it C, and that if he wanted to go M1, then maybe he can go and go to the Guam Land Use Commission, in which you can then have the review of all the different departments and agencies, including the Guam Environmental Protection Agency, and then they can say, you can do M1, but these are the things you need to do. Set conditions on operations under an M1, permitted use still, but special conditions for oil spills and things like that. And that's not to say that this gentleman, I mean, we all know the gentleman, I know the gentleman personally, and I think he's a very responsible businessman, but it's just that additional upzoning, which grants greater latitude in permitted uses, which may not be subject to the additional review that you would want on top of the Northern Waterlands or contingent to the Northern Waterlands. And I know that I did the same thing in, you know, guilty in one of the legislation, where we zoned part of it C and part of it M1. But I tell you that the portion that we zoned part of M1 on an earlier bill was already abutting and right next to the old fuel tanks. So the M1 use is there already and so forth, so I wasn't as uncomfortable as I am moving a little bit further north, closer to the Waterlands and so forth. So I'm thinking that, you know, caution, yet we're still able to put in place a zoning mechanism that would allow the gentleman not to disrupt his business, not to curtail his current operations from what he's able to do in his present location, in his new location, but at least not giving it that greater expansion and latitude to put in industrial uses that just would, in my opinion, caution would urge that we provide additional safeguards and mechanisms, and, much more importantly, review by the different departments and agencies of the government of Guam, because they don't have that review process here. This was not sent out. So I guess I'm leading to making an amendment to zone the property C instead of M1, and so that he can duplicate his operations. And if he wanted to do more, then go through the process that would set it, allow him to do more under the proper restrictions and review.
On the motion to swap it from M1 to C, without objections, so ordered. Are you objecting? No, it's the mo, we're now talking about Ben's motion to go from M1 to C.
Oh, oh. I thought it was an amendment.
Yeah, he made an amendment to go from M1 to C.
Yeah.
Well, I asked, were there any objections?
Yes.
Well, but, yeah, but when I asked for objections...
I was making an amendment, and actually, I wanted to talk to the author of the bill because of the change in the designation. I'm not privy to what the landowners' use of the properties are...
Well, you can have that conversation, but the amendment did pass because there were no objections. I didn't see anything go up. I didn't see any hands go up or anything.
Okay, you hit the gavel, it's gone.
Wait, wait, guys, let's not start playing those games. Did anybody object to that amendment?
Mr. Speaker, I was contemplating objecting, but again, I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention to that. If I could ask just for a minute, recess at this point in time?
See, Jim, we just want to talk to the property owners in the back, just like talking to them.
I'm going to grant the recess, but as of this moment, that motion passed, all right? You're going to have to figure out a way around that. I understand, but the chair called for objections. I looked around.
Can't you speak on an amendment?
You certainly can, but you have to indicate when the chair asks if there's an objection to the amendment that is requesting a poll of the body.
Yeah, but if...
I understand that, but what I'm trying to say is I specifically asked if there was an objection to passing it and sending it down to third. If you want to speak on it, you've got to say, objection? It was not obvious to me, sitting up here. Senator Calvo, I don't want to point it out, but your hand went up after the gavel. But in any event, you guys can discuss this. We will go into recess, but I just want to provide a note of information. I found, Senator Panglinen, your statement about the Ancestral Lands Commission feeling they had the ability to zone interesting, because I've been approached by the Ancestral Lands Commission on more than one occasion in the past to zone the crown properties that they have. So if they think they have the power to zone, I wonder why they come up to me and say, oh, can you do something to zone the properties we have?
I don't know. I'm a confused guy then, because they ask us for the same thing that other people ask for.
We'll take a recess, okay? The motion is back in session. Somebody wish to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move...
I recognize you, Senator Espaldan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Excuse me for my lack of protocol.
It's all right.
And I'll slow things down a little bit. But, Mr. Speaker, at this point in time, with, and again, with due consideration of everything that the good Senator Panglinen did speak about, I, at this point in time, would still like to move for reconsideration on the amendment.
The motion is to reconsider the previous action of the legislature?
The previous action of legislature, which took, which in my, in the original bill, zones the property at M1, and the amendment basically rezoned, zoned it at C, and yes, I would like to...
Okay. It's going to require eight votes. All those in favor of the motion by Senator Espaldan, please signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, ooh, so close, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven votes to reconsider. Seven votes. I counted you, Frank. Just one more time, just to make sure I don't mess it up. Uno, dos, tres, cuatro, cinco, seis, siete. Seven votes to reconsider. And the motion, it last fails.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
I'll take a one-minute recess here. The motion is back in session. Senator Espaldan, you recognize?
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move for reconsideration of the action on the next legislative day.
That motion requires a nine, I think, doesn't it? Well, whatever. On the motion to reconsider?
I think it requires a nine.
On the next, no, I think it's only nine. On the next legislative day, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, shit, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. The motion carries.
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to also move of passing the bill on file.
Okay, on that motion to pass the bill on file... That's procedural. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
What is the next bill?
I hope it won't happen. I'll see discussion tomorrow.
Senator Ishizaki, the next bill is Bill Number 40. Let's take a one-minute recess before we deal with that. Senator Ishizaki, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that substitute Bill 40 be accepted for purposes of discussion.
On that motion, without objections, so ordered.
And I'd like to move that substitute Bill 40 be placed in third reading, and I'll be glad to discuss them.
Proceed.
Bill 40, Mr. Speaker, is an attempt to professionalize and standardize law enforcement and peace officers in our territory. As previously, this body has passed similar but dysfunctional post-commission measures, and at some point transferred much of the post-commission responsibilities to the Guam Community College. And GCC, while it's a good training institution, should not have been allowed to set the standards and to provide certification. It's a great educational institution, and it should continue to serve in that purpose. By reestablishing the true intent of the post-commission, the commission body shall set the standards and find a way to do the certification process, and certainly, the law enforcement agencies, the peace officers of Guam, can continue to use the educational facilities of the Guam Community College. This bill proposes to set under one umbrella all law enforcement and peace officer agencies for establishment of those standards. It will help unify training requirements and certification requirements so that we can protect our government from unnecessary liability, from poor performance and poor training It will impact on all law enforcement agencies under this umbrella, and the commission itself will have the ability to apply for grants and set fees, and it will certainly unify peace officer standards and training and better serve our community to ensure that we're safe and secure. And I hope my colleagues will support this bill.
Senator Blas, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I stand in support of this bill. You know, I recognize the benefits that this bill will provide to, you know, our law enforcement community on the island. Speaking from experience, not only as a former police officer, but also in my prior duties, you know, I found that law enforcement has become a very complex responsibility, and with a number of entities that we have on the island that have their same responsibilities that intersect, I think this bill will help to ensure that we continue to, to ensure that, you know, there's uniformity, that there's compliance, and that there are standards that are set for these officers. But along those lines, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to propose an amendment to the bill, and I'm sure that the amendment has been passed around already. And the amendment basically is to delete the line from section 32301B, the definition of peace officer, delete the line... Delete the line, the public auditor and investigators of the Office of the Public Auditor.
Any discussion? No objection? Without objection, the motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any further discussion? Senator Blasch, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I rise in support of this bill. The current post, as it is right now, I think, is placed in the hands of the Guam Community College. What I have seen over the past years since the implementation of this is that the design and training for law enforcement officers actually is being packaged by academicians instead of practitioners. And I think it should be the other way around, the other way around. And I always say that police officers or law enforcement officers should be trained for those things which they are going to do when they leave training. And the end goal should not necessarily be that a degree must be had at certain periods of time. And that's why the training really now is, what, running up to upwards of six months, eight, to twelve months? I, I think that, that we are, if I may say so, over-training these people. And sometimes we, we require them to take courses that, by learning those courses and by, by acquiring those skills, they will not be able to, to discharge or exercise those skills by the limitations of their status as being so-called rookie officers in the first three years. And I say, "Why do we have to train these officers? When they're not going to need it when they get out?" Those training would come later, after graduation on a specialty training course or refreshment course. I think the, this version of the post, as proposed in this bill, would really put the design and of the training package in the hands of those who understands the workings of public safety and law enforcement personnel. The primary author of the bill himself experienced as a Director of Corrections and a Chief of Police, how it was that sending officers there and then taking other courses that may not be immediately relevant, you know, in the two years that they, they're going to go out and discharge their duties. And I believe this is a fine-tuning of the POASD plus the standardization as much as possible of training so that they can be probably an overlay, laying of, of duties and responsibilities and training in terms of emergencies. They can understand at least the workings of the other related agencies and, and help out during emergencies. This, I, this bill would achieve that. And I think that the, the training of these officers would be more relevant at the end of the training period with this bill. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Anyone else wish to test? Go ahead, Senator Wampat, and then Senator Guthers.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, this is such a voluminous bill. So I won't be able to go back and forth basically to make reference to the specific pages of the bill. So I'm just going to basically kind of read maybe the title and then some of my concerns that might be the easiest. On, on the issue where it says, "Peace officers for the purpose of this particular article", normally what we think of is when we say peace officers, other than individuals listed, there's no mention, of course, of mayors or vice-mayors as being defined as peace officers. And, and I'm not saying necessarily that they should be part of this, because I do know for a fact that many times if there is a problem, the, the mayors will immediately call for assistance. But because of the definition, because of the fact that we've been hearing mayors and vice-mayors being referred to as peace officers, then I, I think that is, that should be taken into consideration, because normally even as peace officers aren't, will they now then be required to carry guns? Okay, so then that's, then the thing is that will they then be carrying guns? And then, of course, the training, would they then be a part of the training? On the, the area of Peace Officers Standards and Training Commission, which is, I guess, subsection 32302, is that if the commission is going to recommend certain individuals, qualified individuals for the above positions, then why not make the recommendations for all those that are covered by the commission? Why only this group of individuals? And by doing so, then there, this act will show a disparity even within the commission. The, the third concern that I have is that in, I think this one is specifically in Page Nine, which provides by rule for reciprocity and recognition, why does the graduate basically from the FBI National Academy hold so much educational weight over a bachelor's degree? The FBI Academy only instructs for three months. Isn't that like attending college for one semester? I mean, no offense, of course, anyone who's been through the program, I'm sure is very rigorous and probably won't qualify to be able to go through that academy. But the FBI Academy should be an additional point getter and not necessarily a requirement. I think that that is a plus, or, like I said, an additional point. So not all the individuals, of course, can attend the FBI Academy. So you have to be selected for, from a pool of candidates, or sometimes maybe those even that, that you know. And another, on, on the same area also is that for temporary certification for peace officers who have completed the training, why, you know, I mean, what is defined here as temporary? Are these, is it saying then that, like, for example, if I quit the department as a peace officer with the post, then I should hold my certification temporarily? And if so, for how long? And they're saying that the officer that quit and wants to come back, then that officer may have to have a temporary certification. And again, the question is, is how long would that be for? On, on the issue of termination of commission membership upon reorganizing, that's kind of, I mean, I don't know how, of course, the, the full definition of what that basically means when you're going to reorganize the commission. So will they terminate then, when the, will they terminate the current? So when the new agency is reorganized? And how long is this for? Or would all the certifying officers then be under one umbrella? And how do these agencies who do not carry out the same duties and responsibilities, what would that mean then for them? The commission, I think, should be a separate and independent body. And that, and I know how difficult that may be. Many times in an island, they're small, because we're all related, so to speak, and it's very difficult to, to basically, I mean, it's easy rather to, to find individuals that, that we know to become a part of, of this body, and that it would not be, be independent. I just see, see that as another inequity. And then the last one is under the title of cadre of trainers. There is no mention of what requirements or qualifications are set to be a trainer. The trainer should have a bachelor's degree in order to train the officers with a solid foundation. I would think that the trainers also should hold a bachelor's degree in the field that they are actually teaching. And if they do not have any specific requirement, then anyone basically who has been, been an officer can actually teach. And, you know, we're having that situation right now in terms of certifying teachers to teach in the area, of course, of their degree, and not necessarily to, to teach, to be, just have a body or an individual go and teach without the full training and certification. So those are, are some of my concerns, and I know briefly, the, the author had talked about it, and maybe in the closing, some of these issues can be addressed. Thank you then, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Guthers?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and colleagues. I do apologize. This bill, I think, is a good bill. It's taken many, many, many months of hard work by many senators, serve on the committee with Senator Ishizaki, to put forth. What's interesting, Mr. Speaker, is in this legislature, you have a number of senators who have had lives in law enforcement. And if I, if I may not be so humble as to say, you have two former, you have one chief of police here, you have one former acting chief, you have one former, and the last director of public safety in the government of Guam as a member of this legislature. You have three former police officers in this legislature. You have the former head of the Homeland Security office in this legislature. And a lot of these folks contributed to the development of this bill. Now, I'm very familiar with the former post-commission law, as I'm sure Senator Ishizaki is. And for a while, I even represented University of Guam on the post-commission. And that is when, for some reason, somehow, the commission was embedded into the Guam Community College. We had some serious problems with the commission at that time, and could really never get it off the ground. And there were a number of reasons. Some were technical impediments to the law. Others involved some administrative issues. But there was an obvious need that for this concept to work, and it's a very good concept, the Police Officer Standards Commission, it's a very good concept, works many places in the United States. But there would be a definite need to rewrite the current law and improve upon that law. I think some of the outstanding aspects of this bill is that, for once and for all, it recognizes the profession of law enforcement on our island. And gives those in law enforcement the professional recognition and the certification mechanism for that recognition. It also establishes the definitions that in some ways have been kind of clouded over the years as to who exactly is or should be a, considered a peace officer. It also creates the clarifications as to the responsibilities for the education of the law enforcement community in the government of Guam, and how that is to be conducted. My colleague, Senator Wampat, brought up a very good question with respect to certification. And who should teach certification courses? And she's right. There are similarities with the school system as to who and what should be certified to teach certification courses. But a mechanism to address that is built into this proposed law, the post-revision law. And I think that the mechanism as written is a good mechanism. The commission itself shall establish the criteria to determine the qualifications of individuals that may be brought into the island or brought in, brought from the community to meet some of these training requirements. In the law enforcement community on Guam, it is very common, routinely common, for certified professional law enforcement instructors to be brought to Guam from very prestigious organizations such as the FBI, the DEA, the Naval Investigative Service, et cetera, et cetera, to do training here on behalf of our law enforcement community. The US Marshal Service also provides training to law enforcers on Guam, the Department of Homeland Security. But there are also educational institutions from off-island that are occasionally brought to the island to help enhance the skills of law enforcers on Guam. But we also have resources on island as well. Those resources are affiliated with Guam Community College, University of Guam, University of Oklahoma, and other institutions that offer programs on the island. I believe, Mr. Speaker and colleagues, that almost everything that could be considered has been considered in this bill. And I'm very optimistic that it will meet the needs to get this post movement going. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak on this? Senator Panglin, you recognized?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, you know, it's obvious, again, that a lot of work has gone into this, and there are many and voluminous testimonies, and quite detailed testimonies by the many witnesses that appeared before the committee in discussing this bill. And it appears, at least from reviewing those testimonies and concerns echoed, that some of them were accepted, and, but quite a number were not. And I'm not sure, you know, for, for whatever reason, I guess we'll just have to review and, and make the judgment ourselves whether or not those were valid suggestions, or they were suggestions that were considered thoroughly and then no changes were made. But I just found one curious thing that I saw in this is that relates to an earlier bill that we were discussing. In an earlier bill we were discussing, we wanted to ensure that anybody who gets a pardon or who gets a sentence commutated, I guess, that we erase that from requiring in disclosure for somebody who wants to run for public office, to allow them to run. But in the post-commission, it doesn't matter whether you've been pardoned, you're still not eligible to be a police officer. But if you've been pardoned, you'd be, they wanted you to make you eligible to, to be an elected official. So the reason why I brought that up is because I thought we're trying to raise the standards of elected officials. But obviously, the standards are going to be lower than for peace officers. And maybe that's something that should be considered. I mean, if we think a pardon is good enough for a public official, maybe it should be good enough for a police officer or a peace officer, or at least eligibility, eligibility to a police officer. So trying to reconcile those two arguments. But the one thing we want to make sure, of course, is that we have standardized training for peace officers. So I guess this is kind of like the Certification Board for peace officers. One of the, the way, the concerns that I had, which I wasn't sure if it was addressed, is that not only do they determine the standards of training to be a police officer, but in one of the testimonies, I saw that their concern was that the post not only decided the standards of training, but they also decided to, the standards of eligibility. That there be, in one, in the testimony, one was, they were going to decide to do the background checks, that they were going to decide to do, to basically determine your suitability to be, to go through the training. And even if you do the training, which is, the whole concept of post in the beginning was that anybody that, we set up this commission, we determined the, the training program, you got to meet this, you're eligible. And it did not go into the other areas of making the decision of suitability, I guess. But now, is, is that an expansion of the original concept of post where it's based on, on, again, training and the criteria for that? And as one witness pointed out, it now goes into doing all these other background checks, and maybe the two should be separate. I, I, and I don't know, I didn't finish reading the bill, or at least when I finished going through it cursorily, I didn't see that. it cursorily, I didn't see that distinction being made, that there is a separation of determining the academic, you might want to say, a portion of eligibility versus the subjective determination of eligibility. And so, it's kind of like in accounting, you don't have the same person making the deposit as you have one taking in the receipts. You have to have a checks and balance. And if they're combined them, then there's no checks and balance. You know, you can just say you did this, you deposited this much, you certify that you did, and nobody verifies it. So perhaps, as one witness pointed out, the subjective portion of deciding who can become a peace officer should be separated from the objective portion of, did this person get this training program? Do they have this many hours? Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I'll continue to read the bill to try and reconcile those two. But without question, I think the standardization of the requirements is a good thing, and I think the bill tries to reconcile some of the things that was not able to have the process move forward, and is attempting to do so. And that is something that's good and commendable. Thank you.
On the motion, place the bill in third reading, or do you wish to close?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like an opportunity to close. There's quite a few questions raised, and I want to try to address them. For my colleagues, I want you to know that this is a very good bill. And the most important part of this is probably that the commission itself is empowered to set rules and regulations and set the standards, and set a mechanism in place to certify, and also to decertify. Because I think public confidence expects this government to be accountable for its actions. And I think we need to expect every police officer, every peace officer, every law enforcement professional out there to perform at a certain standard and no less than that standard. This commission sets forth that standard to qualify. This permission, this commission will define the standards of training that must be met. It will also address areas of like recertification, which may be necessary. It will address in-service training needs. And it's actually empowered to do more than that. It actually can expand its authority to set standards for even supervisory levels of officers, managerial levels, and at some point in future, recommend actually standards for the leaders of the various law enforcement agencies. And I know that Senator Judy raised a question of mayors as peace officers. Mayors in our jurisdiction, as an example, are defined as peace officers. They are not law enforcement professionals. They're not expected to make arrests and carry guns and handcuffs. But they are by definition peace officers, and there's a little subtle distinction there. A peace officer in that status, they're listed here because we want to protect the mayors from assault. And as recently, the vice mayor of Dedado was assaulted while walking through his park in Dedado. By normal statutes, that could be a simple assault. But if he was performing his duties as a mayor or vice mayor, he is protected, or she is protected additionally for the additional charges of assault against a peace officer. And that's a very important distinction. Senator Judy raised a question of FBI Academy standards versus police officer standards. I don't think we need to worry about that, because to be accepted as a candidate to participate in the FBI National Academy, you already have to be a law enforcement professional at a mid-level to senior managerial position. So you would have to come in as, and having had peace officer law enforcement training in the past, and have ascended in that organization with significant amount of experience, actually, to be considered after nomination. Let me see. We raised a question of timeframes, and that's really to empower the commission to authorize it to accept post certification and other training from different timeframes in history and from different agencies throughout the United States. A point on reciprocity. And we wanted a temporary certificate to allow that person to start the process of employment. And in the process of certification evaluation, kind of like academic evaluation, and not too unsimilar to teacher standards, is actually allow the person to start the process of employment, and then verify the training. So you do need time to do that. And then it may identify some deficiencies or some lack of training. And it will allow that person to start a process and even start working, and then give them a short timeframe in which to complete all necessary standards. Let me see. I think we covered into cadre, the training cadre standards. The commission is empowered to define what those standards are, not only for entry level, but for various levels in law enforcement and peace officer agencies which are affected, and to set the standards. Are degrees required? And that's a matter that can be debated by the commission to decide if degrees are required. Certainly, for the upper level in the Guam Police Department, degrees are required. For other agencies, degrees are not necessarily required. And that's a delicate matter which the commission really has to sit down, which is with its leadership, to determine what those standards should be in terms of basic entry level training, promotional training requirements, and leadership and supervisory training requirements. And so, it's a comprehensive package to empower the commission to set those standards. And remember, it's peace officer standards and training. So it's defining the standards and establishing the training needs. Senator Ben raised some questions on, should we set higher standards for police officers and peace officers? In some ways, yes. We are an elected body, and certainly we have to perform above board. But everything we do is open to public scrutiny. A police officer is not always open to public scrutiny, and things come to light when things go wrong. Because we empower them to, with the right to carry weapons, to deprive people of their freedom and liberty, and even, and their property, I believe that there are no higher standards, really, because they have a lot of authority to deprive people of their constitutional, basic constitutional rights. So in the term that Senator Ben raised on commutation, when one sentence is commuted, that does not remove a conviction. Let me see. I think that covers all my responses. I think it's a very good bill, and I hope this body will support it. I thank you.
On the motion, objection? Objection, so ordered. We have a resolution up next. I'm wondering if maybe we should make that the first thing tomorrow? Okay. So recess until one o'clock tomorrow afternoon.